Is there methane mitigation? Is there... Nope. That I know for sure there isn't. And then we're going to have a runoff, different swales and things over there. I know there's no swales over there either, so not applicable. That's my number one answer. You can either say yes, no, or not applicable. Most have been not applicable so far. And then, under eight, you have to give justification. And this is the first time the town has been asked to file this report. And they told us this was the first time they've been asked to file it.
It'll probably be the last time.
Oh, two, right? Someone at DES said we had to do it, another person said we didn't have to. Then the original person says, yes, you have to do it, so I'm doing it. I don't care what Virginia needs anyway.
Does she want to be here at SIS?
Talked about it last week, we'll see. I think we can have a public hearing. Here can't make any decisions. We've got her on, she's got a whole minute, so. Someone coming in now. Hi.
Hi.
Hello? 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 Yes, good.
Yeah, it's good. Oh, you're watching?
They're all keeping a roll from you. Can they give her another couple minutes?
It's a camera. It breaks straight down.
I'm trying to hold the crowd up there.
For a few minutes. Oh, yeah. I watched it properly. She's a bell trainer. She's been with me for 40 years. She's a baller. It's about... Yeah. Yeah. She's helped do some of the training and some of the free stuff. It's just all that leg of music stuff.
All right, it is... Is that him leaving, or... I just heard the door open again, so I don't know if that's him leaving. Sydney's coming in.
No, he's still here.
Okay. I just heard the door open, so we're waiting on the other board member. I don't know if she's coming in or not.
I'll be here.
Were you involved with the vehicle that needed to be towed on Heritage Drive? Or did the tow truck just go over on it?
No, they were towing away with their pickup truck.
It was there all, literally from seven this morning until...
No way?
Yeah. Leaking fluids, all, you could see on the pavement, it was leaking.
Yeah, it was coolant fluid. There's something really fire coming to about that, about the coolant, the oil or something. Maybe the speedy drive.
They towed it off with their pickup truck, finally?
Yeah. Well, I just got here through, so I came across it around.
When it was due, it was something with a cast wheel.
Yeah. And when I came home, I figured, you know, your car broke down. But the whole front end was laying on the ground. All the undercarriage was on the ground, so you're on the wrong side of the road.
Well, it better have been on the right side of the road there.
I guess.
If it's on the wrong side of the road, at least you're coming down Heritage Drive. You've got a long way to see.
I guess. You'd be surprised at the way people come flying around, pulling in. But, anyway, well, it's gone now, so it's good.
Yeah, they towed it away. I drove by a half hour ago and it was gone, so.
It wasn't there when I took the dogs out at seven. And then when I left for work at around eight, it was mysteriously there, so I don't know.
Well, I had no idea.
Very strange. All right, we will open the public hearing at a little past six on the proposed change to the zoning, the transfer station ordinance. And apparently she didn't print out the copy that was issued to the road. The copy that folks want to see it. I can walk you to the door real quick. And if there's any questions or any comments. The substantive change really has to do with landlords and who is a resident, who's not, who's allowed to have a transfer station sticker, who's not. The current organ is a little ambiguous, so we want to try to straighten out a little of that language. If you're not a resident of the town, you don't qualify for a transfer station sticker. You have to physically live here in the town. The garbage has to be generated here in the town. If you're a landlord, you don't qualify. If you have more than four units in your building, you have to provide garbage removal, either dumpster or rubbish removal of some kind for your tenants. And if you lose, or rather you transfer vehicles, buy a new car, need a new sticker replacement, it's a $5 fee. And the only other real change is in here where it said select men, we changed it to select women. But the reality is of the 21st century. I don't believe there's anything else. So we'll open it for a public comment. Going once, going twice?
If there's any interest, isn't it?
No, it's a...
Do you know how many times I've already heard all of this?
If there's no other interest, we will, you know, why don't we just sit here for a moment and we'll see if anyone comes in, because it is just six, so. You know, I'll recess the public hearing. We'll reopen it if anyone comes in to talk to us, how's that? So we will recess the public hearing until 6:15. All right. 6:30 was really, I don't know what time they told me, but 6:30 was really the time we needed.
Oh, it's just called the meeting.
Okay.
I figured it's better to be early than late.
And the tenant or chief will be waiting there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, try to get them to sign one more. Don't forget that.
Yeah. Close the traffic. Just incorporating the dog.
Yeah. Right.
People are kind of getting there. Watching the show.
Yeah. We have recessed the public hearing until 6:15. All right. 6:30 was really, I don't know what time they told me, but 6:30 was really the time we needed.
Oh, it's just called the meeting.
Okay.
I figured it's better to be early than late.
And the tenant or chief will be waiting there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, try to get them to sign one more. Okay. Don't forget that. Yeah.
Close the traffic. Just incorporating the dog.
Yeah. Right.
People are kind of getting there. Watching the show.
Right. We have recessed the public hearing until 6:15.
There's nobody here.
No, I know, but just in case someone shows up. Just so you know.
You missed them.
There was an overwhelming crowd, they tried to chase me off.
They moved into school.
George, do you want to maybe go in with Denise and discuss part of the issue this evening, maybe? Just have a... Give her a heads up?
Yeah, maybe we can.
Right now?
I think you haven't done anything wrong. It's just a person...
The principal's on.
You need to get your office clock situated.
Yes. And it's not, you and I go in there, it's a meeting. It's not done. I guess there's no tape anymore, but data, whatever it's gone.
Yeah, you're right. No, I'll turn that off.
All right, we'll reopen the public hearing on the transfer station ordinance change. I've reopened the public hearing, so.
Thank you.
I'll wait for you to sit down.
Oh, there's more people here?
We'll close it again. No, they were here. Okay, so is there anyone here to speak for the public hearing on the change to ordinance 93 point dash one? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 6:17.
Well, you can't do that, you opened it at 6:18.
How tall? I'm looking at my thing. I put my glasses on.
This clock is a...
That clock is wrong, so we opened it at...
So what time did you open it?
6:15, and we're closing at 6:17. And now we can...
Take our way to the meeting?
Now we have to wait till 6:30.
Oh, it wasn't immediately.
Sorry. I don't know making a rule, but it's vulnerable.
Saunders talked to me.
Yeah, I did. Actually, for once that time, just sign everything. Kind of nice, actually.
Do you want this recording and the interim?
Do you not turn it off?
Oh. It's recording right now.
We could turn it off, if you want to turn it off.
We could turn it off.
Do you want to turn it off?
Press the red button.
The August 20th meeting of the board, select board. First order of business...
How about the 13th on here? Is this the right agenda?
It's the right agenda, it's the wrong date. Today's 20th, we're not going to repeat last week.
Okay.
I hope. Groundhog Day here in Rockland. The first order of business is approval of the August 6 minutes. And first of all, I owe a solemn apology. I went back and was going through my emails, and I actually did suggest it. So you were right, I was wrong last week, and you accepted it, and I appreciate that. So I didn't have any other rights for those things, and I didn't propose any for the 13th, so. By consensus, we will adopt both the 6th and the 13th minutes. Uh, community input. First opportunity for community input of the evening. Seeing none, we will move into department head business. We will start with the highway department, and they're here. You guys want to come on up? We can talk about whatever you have to talk about, and then we'll go with the non-public personnel.
Well, we have hydraulic lines going up backhoe last week.
Say it again.
We had a couple hydraulic...
Hydraulic, okay.
And it went over the $200 limit, of course.
Yeah.
I got a P over $326.04 to Nick Body Works and Chalk Creek Allen. They were three, they make online tours.
Okay. What do we, how do you move it and we talk about it?
Move PO 1484 for Nick Body Works and May, or May, or three hydraulic hoses for the backhoe, 32604.
A second. Okay, so...
It would have been over $2,000 if we had come in and do what we did.
That's one of my questions. You did, you guys put them in yourself. Thank you. All right, is there any other questions, Mike? All right, so all those in favor, purchase order number 1484, $326.04, signify, yes, and I oppose. All right.
I'd like to purchase $2,000 of crush gravel to finish the project down on Wood Run and have it for other projects that we bought some of the year that stockpiled, so we could have some projects.
Yep.
This is part of the Mal de Roux.
Yep.
I move purchase order 1486, Pike Industries, three-quarter inch crush gravel, not to exceed 2,000, is that a good price?
Two thousand, we need more, we'll come back.
Okay, for $2,000?
If we don't use it all, then we'll use it.
A second. Okay, so that was the other question. So this is to finish some in the stockpile, a little bit of here, some...
Right, and we got a couple projects we couldn't be digging up, couldn't grab them into, so we want to have some available.
Any other questions? All those in favor, purchase order number 1486, say aye. Aye, opposed, all right. All right, I lost them. Okay, that's David.
Six seconds.
Oh, perfect. I lost the appointment.
We have hydraulic issues with these skid steers.
Okay.
The valve is an internal leak in it, causing the equipment to drop.
All right.
And when we're using it for rental issues, and I got a quote from Bobcat of New Hampshire for $3,567, sixty cents. The valve itself is $22,000. That's taken it out and repair it, and then I can give you the CIP the way it was.
So, I'm sorry, what is the skid steer used for?
Roof tie mowing, transfer station, everything, there's snow blowing and everything right now.
I have to explain some of the issues we have with the stopper.
Yeah, huh? All right, so it's going to come out of vehicle repair and maintenance, how much is it?
$3,567.60.
All right, so you've got, so I have enough in there right now, so. All right.
And of course, these other people, we don't know their same line, so. But I think it should be in good shape. We keep knocking on wood.
So you have to say that.
There's a PO from Bobcat of New Hampshire, and we'll get it scheduled in.
PO 1427 moved to a valve replacement on the skid steer for Bobcat of New Hampshire, $3,005.67.60.
All right, a second. So do we have any other questions for...
Is Bobcat the only option?
They need it.
You know, it's the age and...
Okay.
Yeah, it's a...
Unfortunately, that's not going to make it happen.
And it works fine until it heats up, and then everything, you hit one button and everything goes.
Something else moves.
Something else moves, and that's not safe.
No, no, I'm just saying, is that manufacturer the only place you could go?
Oh, yeah, Bobcat built this machine.
So that would be the one, okay.
Anybody else that would work on it would buy the pad from Bobcat?
Okay, and there's more?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's just over 1,000 hours on this.
Just question. Yeah, because it's all working, all this.
All right. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor, purchase order 1427, say aye. Aye. Opposed, all right. It has to be working, because someone tells me we're going to get snow this winter, and the sidewalks want to be plowed.
I saw me too.
And we're going to be using it to crush glass, right?
And bail stuff?
Bail things, and we're going to need it, so let's get a fix. We can't afford a new one.
All right.
There's no reason for replacing that one right now, so.
Anything else besides personalities? So apparently, it was in a paper this past weekend, and Joe was going to start this week.
They were actually going to pay, they thought they might get there today.
But they didn't tell us.
I didn't. Correct.
Okay.
However, they did pay it today.
Right, fair enough.
And they are moving it to the night schedule, so it's going to eliminate a lot of traffic.
Oh, they're going to do it at night?
Okay, they're in town, they're going to be doing some on the road at night, so I got an email this afternoon from Joe Woshy saying that we're probably going to do it on a night schedule with not so much traffic.
All right, so we'll send out a notice saying...
Not sure when they're this week.
Sometime this week, in the evening, they're going to be repairing it.
Yeah, this week, I think.
Stay tuned.
I saw the barriers where they...
Well, he brought the barriers in case they, they thought they were going to move one job for another day and do it, and then apparently they decided to wait until we're on a night schedule, so.
Do we have anything else besides non-public?
Oh, Showroom is going to be in town to repair, Foundry Street.
Oh, good, okay, yeah.
This week, maybe tomorrow.
Okay.
And I was talking to John from Showroom about the spot on Church Street, Great Vatican Rise, and you can see he's doing the same thing.
Yeah.
And at the foot of Locust and Main, we were going to dig it out and stuff. He said, I can plane that for you. I said, what are you going to charge us to plane it? He says, Pike's paying me for the day to be here to fix that job. He says, I moved my equipment. He says, I'm not going to charge you anything because there's not enough work.
Okay.
So you're going to grind it for us, and we'll pay it ourselves.
Perfect. Okay, that's good of me.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, for sure, actually, thank you.
He says, they're paying me for the day, I don't have no place else to go until they get here. And straight down the street, I can run the machine across the road, I'll do it for you for nothing, so.
Wow. We like that, kind of, I like those connections. All right, anything else?
Rachel?
Okay, so we, well, just so everyone understands, we're going to go to a non-public session to deal with something with the highway department, and then we have one from last week. In administration, we need to deal with also personnel. Then we'll come back, I'll let everyone know when it comes up, okay?
Okay.
So if you want to...
Well, should you go into non-public for personnel issues?
Second, all those in favor, Mike, yes?
Yes.
Denise, yes, we are in a non-public session for personnel issues.
Okay.
701, I have...
You have 701, or I'll agree with that.
Okay, so, I'll wait for you to sit down, sorry. All right, so the select board took up two personnel issues, non-public session, one from last week, we have resolved, a new one from this evening, the select board has decided to terminate a member of the staff of the transfer station, effective immediately.
Will you vote on it?
Pardon?
Will you vote on it?
Yeah.
And make that motion?
All right, a second, all those, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It will be effective, I like it, but it'll be delivered, we'll send a letter tomorrow. And, where are we? Please, I'm to the chief, I think he is coming in, but, all right, we'll move on to town administration, select board vacancy. I haven't got anything official yet, a couple people approached me and asked questions, but I'm not going to name names until they officially ask, so I don't want to scare anyone off, that may be considered, so. But we had said, we were hoping to have applications or letters of interest, at least, in by the 24th. If we don't get any, we might not have to accept this, so. Or we can leave it at any, I mean, I prefer not to do that, but no one wants to step up, we can't draft people, so. So we'll move on?
Yep.
All right. Town hall maintenance under budget, I have connected with Patrick Alley, who gave me a couple of names yesterday, the day before last, he gave me a list of four or five contractors that I need to repair, so. So we have names, I don't know if the budget's going to allow for, but we should at least get quotes and see if we can get the protocol.
It should be like...
We thought it was going to be about a couple thousand.
Yeah, but we're really tight.
Yeah, oh, I agree, I agree, I agree, but maybe if we can get at least an estimate, we can get in for next year. I prefer not to, but I'd like to get down this year, but. Okay, so we will hold off on that one table, at least I care back from some contractors. Transition plan, Caroline had given us some spreadsheets regarding where we might be able to do some diversions.
Ah, down.
Okay, so there were a couple of places, we had asked her to look, to see where we could find...
Yeah, to review it.
To some money, and so she came up with a few places under the executive budget, I think that was the only budget that was touched, actually. So, the police chief, he's not, Bob's not here, Mark's not here, for the fire department, but they both did agree and understood that they may be called upon to have to shuffle some more lines around, and they were willing to do that. She was suggesting moving, or is it? Money out of the finance and admin secretary line, some out of the admin clerical support, some out of mileage, and some out of IT hardware and software services. Think... I'll make sure I'm not misspeaking. I think it was one of the, I thought it was one of the places, but I don't see any other green highlights. So we could make up the difference for the shortfall in insurance and have the, what was it, 34 or 4300 for additional dollars to cover the additional hours we would ask per work through the end of the year. So, the good news is that we have places where we can move things around, there are several options. And there's also under professional services, we move some around there. I have not moved back from when, apparently Suzanne had moved a few things around already, and we agreed to them, I shouldn't say apparently, because we did agree to them. The electricity at town hall, she had doubled, almost doubled that, and...
To 18, right?
To 18, yeah. We'll see what the next, what the next couple months show us. I don't believe that we will need that much, but I could be wrong. But the next couple months, I think we'll start to show the trends, because we will be out of the cooling season soon, or hopefully soon. We haven't had the oppressive heat this past week, so that should probably help with the air conditioning costs. Also, with the replacements of the air conditioning units downstairs, the different components, hopefully that will help as well. But I think we will be able to make it, so if we were, and there may be under, I'll let the police chief speak to what he thinks, and we might be able to move something around if he wants to do it, moving forward, but we don't need it for right now. So if we want to, we can certainly approve the additional hours for administrative support because we can cover and we can make sure that the insurance underestimate is taken care of, so. And I've made sure that we've made note that we won't be underestimating payments for insurance moving forward. For next year, okay, which we're going to talk about in a moment, too, so. Do you want to, are you prepared to make a motion this evening to tell, we have your first, your paper? Yours, your print is much bigger. I'm just jealous, because you can, I can, you can see yours, I can see mine, there you go.
So we're making a motion to go ahead and increase Caroline's hours...
And increase hours to 40 versus the 32 currently?
I'll make that motion.
And I will second that. Do I have a discussion? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right. So we will continue to shuffle the deck chairs as we move through the year, but the one thing I know for certain, we won't be able to take any money as was thought, maybe originally out of the highway department maintenance, but...
Yeah.
That was never a good idea anyways, but we're, we should look at all options. So anyways, so we have that taken care of, at least for now. We could take that off the agenda. 2019 budget planning?
So that's effective immediately for her?
That will start with next week.
The next paycheck?
I think Monday is the, or the next budget. This is a payroll week, so Monday.
Monday.
So Monday.
It's payroll, so.
Yeah, so it's starting Monday of the year. Should go to another, another 27, yeah, today's 20, I should go to that 7, apparently not. Okay, so budget planning. Caroline prepared for us a map, a calendar, is a map of sorts, for the budget process for 2019, with important dates, we're going to access it online.
I'll put it on there.
Okay, so...
I'm going to come in and...
Okay, well, that's all right. All I was going to say is, so for next week, what I want to do is, I want to forward, well, why don't I, I'll give you a week to...
I'll find it, I've tried a couple of times, and I haven't been able to find it.
I want, I want to make sure that all the department heads have access to it as well, which I believe they do, but I'll let them know that there are drop deadlines, where they have to have information to us, so we can make sure we have information prepared to our satisfaction, so presenting the budget, so they can be very good at through this process. We don't have a lot of time, so I want to make sure we're not caught in the deadline number. So, why don't we, we'll be prepared to talk about it next week, then?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So I'm just going to tell you, we'll tell next week. The residents' tax and inventory, so I have it continued, I should, sorry, wrong, I'm going to flip. In your folder, when we decided to do away with the inventory...
We didn't sign it?
We had to sign it, to indicate to the state that we didn't want it.
Right.
So we should do it. So we're saying we will not participate in these any longer, and we will both sign it, so they will know.
You guys sign on line? All right, I'll agree with that.
Okay, so. All right, so the select board took up two personnel issues on public session. One from last week we have resolved. A new one from this evening, the select board has decided to terminate a member of the staff at transfer station effective immediately.
Does she vote on it?
Pardon?
Does she vote on it?
Yeah.
And make that motion?
All right, second, all those in any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It will be effective like immediately, we'll send a letter tomorrow. And where are we? Please, I'm to the chief yet, I think he is coming in, but. All right, we'll move on to town administration, select board vacancy. I haven't got anything official yet, a couple of people approached me and asked questions, but I'm not going to name names until they officially ask. So I don't want to scare anyone off, that may be considering, so. But we had said, we were hoping to have applications or letters of interest at least in by the 24th, if we don't get any, we might not be able to accept this, so. Or we can leave it at any, I mean, I prefer not to do that, but no one wants to step up, we can't draft people, so. So we'll move on?
Yep.
All right. Town hall maintenance under budget, I have connected with Patrick Alley, who gave me a couple of names yesterday or the day before last, he gave me a list of four or five contractors that I need to be prepared for. So we have names, I don't know if the budget's going to allow for, but we should at least get quotes and see if we can get the protocol.
It should be like...
We thought it was only about a couple thousand.
Yeah, but we're really tight.
Yeah, well, I agree, I agree, I agree, but maybe if we can get at least an estimate, we can get in for next year. I prefer not to, but I'd like to get down this year, but. Okay, so we will hold off on that one table, at least I care back from some contractors. Transition plan, Caroline had given us some spreadsheets regarding where we might be able to do this, so I virtually...
Ah, down.
Okay, so there were a couple of places she, we had asked her to look to see where we could find.
Yeah, did review it.
To some money, and so she came up with a few places under the executive budget, I think that was the only budget that was touched actually. So, the police chief, he's not, Bob's not here, Mark's not here, for fire department, but they both did agree and understood that they may be called upon to have to shuffle some more lines around, and they were willing to do that. She was suggesting moving, um, where is it? Money out of the finance and admin secretary line, um, some out of the admin clerical support, some out of mileage, and some out of IT hardware and software services. Think. I'll make sure I'm not misspeaking. I think it was one of them, I thought it was one of them, but I don't see any other green highlights. So we could, we could make up the difference for the shortfall in insurance and have the, what was it, thirty-four, forty-three hundred for additional dollars to cover the additional hours we would ask per work through the end of the year. So, the good news is that we have places where we can move things around, there are several options. And there's also under professional services, we moved some around there. I have not moved back from when, apparently Suzanne had moved a few things around already, and we agreed to them, I shouldn't say apparently, because we did agree to them. The electricity at town hall, she had doubled, almost doubled that, and...
To eighteen, right?
To eighteen, yeah. We'll see what the next, what the next couple of months show us. I don't believe that we will need that much, but I could be wrong. But the next couple of months, I think we'll start to show the trends. Because we will be out of the cooling season soon, so, or hopefully soon. We haven't had the oppressive heat this past week, so that should probably help with the air conditioning costs. Also with the replacements of the air conditioning units downstairs, the different components, hopefully that will help as well. But I think we will be able to make it, so. If we were, oh, and there may be under, now, I'll let the police chief speak to what he thinks, and we might be able to move something around if he, if he wants to do it, moving forward, but we don't need it for right now. So if we want to, we can, we can certainly approve the additional hours for administrative support, because we can cover and we can make sure that the insurance underestimate is taken care of, so. And I've made sure that we've made note that we won't be underestimating payments for insurance moving forward. For next year, okay, which we're going to talk about in a moment too, so. Do you want to, are you prepared to make a motion this evening to tell, we have your question, your print is much bigger. I'm just jealous, because you can, I can, you can see yours better than mine. I can see mine, there you go.
So we'll make a motion to go ahead and just...
And increase, um...
Caroline's hours.
Hours to forty versus the thirty-two currently.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second that. Do I have a discussion? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or just panicked, so we will continue to shuffle the desk chairs as we move through the year, but the one thing I know for certain, we won't be able to take any money as was thought, maybe originally out of the private department's maintenance bill.
Yeah.
That was never a good idea anyways, but we're, we should look at all options. So anyways, so we have that taken care of, at least for now. The, we could take that off the, off the agenda. Twenty nineteen budget planning?
So that's effective immediately for her?
That will start with next week.
The next paycheck?
I think Monday is the, or the next budget, this is a payroll week, so Monday.
Monday.
So Monday.
It's payroll, so.
Yeah, so it'll start on Monday of the year. Should go to another, another twenty-seven, yeah, today's the twentieth, I should go to that seven, apparently not. Okay, so budget planning, Caroline prepared for us a map, a map, calendar, is a map of sorts, for the budget process for 2019 with important dates, are we going to access online?
I'm pretty fond of it.
Okay, so...
I'm going to come in and sit with her.
All I was going to say is, so for, so for next week, what I want to do is, I want to forward, well, why don't I, I'll give you a week to...
I'll find it, I've tried a couple of times and I haven't been able to find it.
I want, I want to make sure that all the department heads have access to it as well, which I believe they do, but I'll let them know that there are drop dead deadlines, where they have to have information to us, so we can make sure we have information prepared to our satisfaction, so presenting the budget for them, so they can be very good at, at the review of the process. We don't have a lot of time, so I want to make sure we're not caught in the deadline number. So, why don't we, we'll be prepared to talk about it next week then?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So long as you can tell, we'll tell next week. The residence tax and inventory saga continues, I should, sorry, wrong, I'm going to flip. In your folder, when we, when we decided to do away with the inventory?
We didn't sign it.
We had to sign it to indicate to the state that we didn't want it.
Right.
So we should do that. So we're saying we will not participate in these any longer, and we will both sign it, so they will know. So that's taken care of, I'm still not prepared to decide tonight whether or not I want to keep the residence tax, I'm still trying to, I still have some thoughts, I'm not sure. Unless you're, well, if I'm not ready and you are, vice versa, because we're not getting much down, are we? You've got to be unanimous, so.
Yes.
If you don't mind, can we wait another, um...
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so we're kind of in the same place.
I just want, we got to be able to find more.
Well, for sure, right? Well, exactly, right, no, I get that. We've already, by now having the inventories, we're doing away with that penalty payment, so we need to figure out for there too, so. Anyways, transfer station revised ordinance, we had a public hearing this evening. Were, did you want to act on the, on the proposed, there were no proposed changes from the public, for sure. There wasn't anyone from the public that wanted to speak to it, so are you ready to act on, or do you want to wait a week?
I'm fine, it's what we already talked about, right?
Yep, so the, the ordinance itself was the changes that we outlined the last time we spoke about it. Maybe the biggest thing is the, who's a resident, who, who's rather qualified for a sticker, a resident, not a property owner. So that takes care of the landlord issue, and it also lines it up with the minimum housing standards ordinance we passed, so it's more than four. Have it done, or some other means of removal. This will also help to curb, or rather clear up any confusion, I think, from the front office to, to who qualifies as a resident, so I hope. And a change, gendered for stuff, which I think is appropriate, and a fee.
And a fee's good.
We have a five dollar fee for replacement, because of the issue of transfer of a listing.
Right.
And who can transfer and how and all that, so that's also in there. It's just from a previously registered vehicle to a newly registered vehicle, so there's no confusion as to whether or not you had one before. So if we're ready, we should, we should probably, you could do it together, so you could do the adopt, move the adoption of ord, the amendment to ordinance ninety-three dash one and ninety-three dash one fee schedule.
Okay, you make a motion?
I'll do it, so. I'll move that we accept the changes that outlined in the amendment to ninety-three dash one dated, what is it? It's supposed to be dated on, eight twenty?
Eight twenty, yeah.
Eight twenty, uh, eighteen. And the fee schedule will also date eight twenty eighteen.
Segment.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we have revised, revised on August twentieth, twenty eighteen, and I'll make sure that we get a, we voted this evening to accept it, next week we will have a copy that we can sign.
Okay.
And then we'll actually be held official, but I'm just saying, the revisions are, the revisions dated this evening. And we're looking back, this, this new amendment, we've got the amendment ninety-three dash one twenty-eight, eight twenty eighteen, easy for me to say. Okay, moving right along. Revised transfer station ordinance, planning ZVA file management, Caroline has a proposal to help, and I do think it really will help streamline the planning slash ZVA slash assessing files. Her plan is to combine the three files, we currently, currently, the planning and ZVA files are terrible, say, a mess at the moment. There will be one file per property, so current, currently it's by last name and date for planning and ZVA, but all assessing is all by map and line, so it's difficult to have a history of the lot, which is really what you need, it's not, it's not the person, it's the lot, and the changes associated with lots. So her proposal is to have all, the assessing records are in her office currently, so she will begin slowly, as she did with the assessing records, to create separate files per lot and color code, I don't remember color she picks, planning will be one color within the folder, and zoning changes will be a different color within the folder, and the assessing will be a different color. Are we okay with that change?
Well, my only concern was that how often do the planning or the zoning board need to access these files, because those are in locked doors, it only does, what's left and Caroline can get into.
They would just need to make arrangements with...
With her, at the...
Or whoever, right, yeah.
Okay, all right, because it wouldn't be available as it is now to them.
Well, you're right, you're right, but I mean, to be honest, they couldn't find it anywhere if they wanted to.
No, I'm sure it's true, I'm sure, but I just wanted to make sure that I understood how like we're going to get in there.
And you know, we, we had a conversation actually about large maps, like multi-page large maps that are kept for, for planning purposes especially, and Mr. Kirk showed how it's actually possible to fold down a five, six, seven, eight page document, so it's actually very flat and will fit into a folder, so it's possible. So we have, we will be actually keeping the actual large...
You wouldn't want to get a cabinet, and make cabinets for these large maps?
We have some.
Oh, you did, okay.
And it's nearly, it's next to impossible to actually find anything, because they get so heavy, like trying to find, that is the way they used to be done. And to me, it made sense as well, because they say it's flat, but currently that's not the way most towns do it anymore.
And she also was talking about taking some space in the select boards' office.
Yeah, we may need to, to put a couple of file cabinets in there, not of assessing, but of some other stuff that she asked.
Well, what, her other, yeah, her other work, they need to go to.
Talk about rearranging.
Do we even know what are in those file cabinets in there?
Same where?
In the select boards?
In the actual store, we have, we have them.
Well, there's something behind that desk.
Yes, there is, and that one is on, I have it all written down, I have a spreadsheet on the files.
Okay, so, and we also have the vault, a little more touchable.
Well, they need to, what I've done is I've identified everything, and put a location on it in terms of drawer, but no, there's things in there that, but I tell Caroline there's time to look at these, but most of those are very important things.
So she will present a plan to us, how she would envision rearranging the board office, because obviously it's our call, we do it, and I don't feel it's our space, but I think we...
But it's not a space that we use often enough, but we do need to have a space that we need to go into...
We need to have a space, yes, we do.
To work, especially budget time and stuff, I mean, but maybe we don't need to have all of that space, I'm not opposed to it at all, I'm just, um...
Or we, you know, we, we have a lot of, what I would call dead space in between, like a U, if they do a U, it might be we could do a square or now rectangle, we could push them together, I mean, there are, there are options, I think, and...
Definitely options, for sure, I agree.
I mean...
And it might be just easier to have three tables versus, so it's bulky, nasty desk. You're so useless, there's nothing in that you can do. That mine desk has all those pivots on the top, and you can't, you can't...
It becomes a catch-all.
It does, you know, so it might be easier just to...
Half the things on there are mine.
Might be down, a table, but, you know.
The pressers have a metal scrap place.
Well, anyway, let's not get ahead of ourselves, anyway, so there are options, but as far as the planning and the file management, are we, are we okay with the beginning of the consolidation of these three files? I mean, to me, it really makes a lot of sense, when, when it was explained, especially with the planning. We have, I think we have a vested interest in knowing, in being able to present, we had, someone come in, wanted information on, on a parcel that he was presenting on, Karen Mackenzie came in and talked about a parcel on someone's road, and said, oh, do you have the file? We have no idea where it is, and it was not that long ago, I mean, it was like ten, not even ten years ago, so, I suppose that had to be done only three or four years ago, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
They didn't, so...
She wants to take it, yes.
Okay, well, we'll let her know, by consensus, we are okay with her beginning to change the file around, so. Recreation. Do you have a meeting tomorrow night?
I have a meeting tomorrow night, I'll live more tomorrow night, I don't really have a budget update, I had one from Dee, but I really want to see Caroline's, this has...
Right, so I talked to Caroline a little bit about it today.
Yeah.
This is a payroll week.
Yeah.
So, because I said, oh, so do we have the final budget number, she goes, well, yes or no, we have, so payrolls this week, but she's just waiting, she wants to make sure there aren't any outstanding bills coming from them, she doesn't believe there are, she believes she has everything, but she wants to wait till after meeting tomorrow night, she said, to make sure there isn't anything that they haven't made her aware of, so. I said, okay, payroll. I'd rather have the, you know, the right information, accurate information.
Right, because this, last week was the last week, so it should be in this week's payroll, all of the payroll, right?
I would think.
Yeah, okay.
I could tell you, I mean, it just as an aside, that, at least from one child's perspective, she thought it was great, she loved camp, and it's certainly a very necessary, I think very necessary program, if we can make it work the right way for folks in town.
Yeah, I think...
There were a lot of families that took advantage of it, maybe more, but we pay more.
Most, most positive, most was positive, there's a few, but I mean, we're still in the transition of getting the program, I'm not starting, starting the new...
It's volunteers trying to...
And, yeah, and so I think that, where, you know, like I said, I'm going to work with Dee on the budget for this coming year, because we're really, my opinion, we have to rate it a little bit, or stop some field trips or something, and we have to do, it's going to have to happen one day.
Right, they got, yes, exactly.
We'll talk about this.
As someone paying, I honestly believe you've got to pay, you're going to have to pay a little more, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen.
And that's over the U, because if you're talking daycare versus, but, you know, camp, there's something personal, I mean, it's three times a month for that camp, that's for daycare, so.
Oh, for sure.
You know, even with, before an aftercare.
Yeah, no, exactly, so...
So I think that, you know, we can go up a little bit.
I agree, and looking forward to seeing what the final budget numbers are and next year's proposals. All right, so we'll table the budget update under, for next week when you have hopefully all the details for tomorrow's meeting. Final plans for the planning board? Oh, okay, I was like, then we just talk about this? No, so I spoke with, the planning board discussed it again last, this past week, and their agreement, their appreciation that the select board reused a, a text collector for file again, yeah, that's what we said, we said yes. Last week, so I talked to Amber about it today, she was still very much willing to do it. She's trying to, she's looking back through her records, whether or not it was, she believes it was a fee that she was paid, it was separate, it wasn't through her payroll, so it was like the town had a check, it wasn't very frequent, I mean, it's like quarterly or something, as, as she needed to go over and file them, but, so it wouldn't be like it. We assume it would take approximately three hours of staff time to file the registry, maybe less, but that's what we're, that's what we're basing our fee on, the town charges, so a fee should be covering the actual cost, so we're trying to figure out what her, what the fee the town paid for it really was, based on...
Why wouldn't we do it as through payroll then?
Because it's not the same rate as, uh...
I know, but you can still give her a stipend through, a stipend for the...
That's fine, I mean, maybe we can figure that out.
Oh, okay, I don't think we should pay her outside the payrolls.
I was just saying, that's what they did before, that's, that's what she, she said they did before, that doesn't mean we have to do that, she hasn't done this for, for, gosh, it's been several years since she's done this, so. I would more prepare on about the details of the payroll, but she is willing to do it, so.
Okay, that's good.
The, the planning board was suggesting a fifty dollar fee to go file, and then, and then the applicants would need to bring three checks, one for the fee of the town, one for L chip payment back to the registry, and then another fee to the registry, so they would need to bring three checks, one to the town, two to the registry.
And then they'll all that wait before they come here, and then it's all they have to go home and do it again.
Correct. But if for some reason they don't fill out their forms the right way, it's not up to, Andrea is going to be delivering them, she's not filling them out for them.
Nope.
So if for some reason their engineer or their consulting firm that was doing it for them doesn't do it right, well, she brings over and wastes her time, she comes back, they have to pay again.
Yeah, that's true.
We're not going to mess around, but we are going to start requiring that the town do it, so they actually know for sure if these plans are going to be filed, because we have no guarantee now that things get filed that are supposed to be, so. And then people will come back, for anecdote, they announced, said we have people will come back and say, oh, I want to repeal what we did, or reverse things, like, well, we have no record of it, they never filed it, that's the record for, so, I don't know how you repeal something or reverse something, they never file something.
So they wouldn't file it, probably because there's a cost to it, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. There is, but it's not official unless you file it, so, the county needs to know. So, so that's a good thing, so the town's going to start doing that again, thank goodness. Transfer station post closure report, I worked on it today, I need to go over and look at the map that there's, the state is suggesting where they believe it is, I've got to go over and look at the transfer station to see if it is grass over, because one of the, that's the, one of the questions, which I don't know the answer to, I mean, I do know that we don't have a methane mitigation system over there, for sure, that much I know, and George knows, but do we have a cap?
A what?
A cap over, oh, sorry, there is a cap over the, that much we know, because it's not exposed, right?
Right.
But is it mowed on a regular, oh, sorry, is it brassed, is there a slope to promote runoff, is it mowed on a regular basis? DES recommends that landfills be mowed twice a year. I asked George, and he doesn't believe it is been done, because there was never any record, and towns don't do part of this before, so we're all learning together, so. But I'm working on it, it's more than halfway done, so.
Okay.
Stay tuned, we will keep it on the agenda though, because I don't want to lose it.
Right.
And I neglect to say at the beginning of the meeting, and I do apologize, that we're adding something to the agenda, H, abatement appeals, we have five, I believe, five property owners that are appealing the decision of the denial of abatement that we made a week ago, a few weeks ago, which is their right. What has been the practice at, before the Board of Land and Tax Appeal, either the select board can go and represent the town, or the professionals that we pay can go and represent the town, that would be Avatar, what the past practice has been is that we've asked Avatar to go represent the town, and we've been successful in our, um...
Well, there's a little doc here, would you like Chad to make a little diggy for the town?
Right, and I would suggest that, yes, we would like a person that's well versed in how to deal with the Board of Land and Tax Appeal.
So will you take a motion?
What does it say on the form?
What do you mean, what's it say on the form?
Yeah, I'll move that we have Chad Rogard from, Rogard from Avatar Associates represent the town wrongs for, before the Board of Tax, Land and Tax Appeal for, for abatements for twenty eighteen.
Who is Todd Craft?
To meet his own person.
Three times a month?
Oh, those are the folks that are representing the people that want to behave.
So the town, I don't think there's any here for us to sign, that I can see. If now it's on our hands, we're going to the state, right? But we still, we still have Tuesday, September first, is that right?
September first filed, yeah, so there could be more people.
There could be more, so we table it until then.
No, so we just have to make a decision as to whether or not we're going to represent the town, or if we're going to ask Avatar to represent the town, and I would suggest we have Avatar there.
Yes.
Because they're the experts.
Right, they're the ones that made those decisions, so they have to stand by them.
Oh, we made it, well.
I gave you that mark, you're not supposed to have to get it on yourself.
So, you take it.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we in agreement then, that we're going to ask Avatar?
Yep.
By consensus, we will have Avatar represent the town before the Board of Tax and Land. Okay, that takes care. Town administration, standing items, board member activities, I had plenty more last week, we had a few public hearings, but not this week.
What?
For you.
Remember the last couple of weeks I had nothing?
All right, now you do.
I had something, every day this week.
I'm sorry.
Tomorrow night I have rec. Wednesday night I have family day. And Thursday night I have police base meetings.
Okay. Thursday night's going to be here?
They're all here.
Okay. So Thursday night you're going to discuss whether or not you want to do some more?
What are our next options? Because based on the public hearing, we haven't really had a meeting since and we, you know, we need to know what is our next steps to go forward.
Okay.
That's what the place, if they're going to go recommendation, you know.
Okay.
There was some, there was some talk about having the three complexes together.
Yeah.
We don't have negotiation powers to talk to anybody about purchasing land. And so to say, you know, to put that on the committee isn't the right thing, enlightened and the right thing to do.
Right, I agree.
Now, I drove around town and looked at, it was like, okay, where can we put this thing, you know? And it was like, I really can't come up with anything that I would believe that it would happen.
Correct.
So I don't know what my, my next step is to, to do anything about what we were proposing today.
Committee was really supposed to be looking at the needs of the police station.
Right, right. So, I mean, their proposal was what was discussed at the public hearing.
Right.
And so we either go forward with it or we don't.
Well, you say there's any other option.
But I don't know of any other, I mean, the only other suggestions that we received that night was to see if we can make a three-way, you know, complex and one, you know, and do it all at once, which would be.
Or, or, or at least two, right? At least the town.
Well, that was, that's part of our proposal.
Right.
And, but people don't, well, people don't make the. Well, yeah. And people don't think that silver is an option for that if you're going to expand it. And I agree, but I, like I say, I don't know. Because we looked at the other, we don't want a police station in the woods.
Well, I'll leave it to the, I'll leave it to the committee to make a recommendation. I don't want to.
The other one with water issues. So I don't know, we don't really, I don't really know what we can do.
I mean, there are demographic considerations I would think that you want to consider.
Yep.
Kim brought that up.
Yeah, so, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it and everyone is going to be able to make it, so that's good.
Okay, I'll look forward to hearing.
So I should have an update on next Monday.
All right. I'm going to just work on all the little administrative things that I'm supposed to do, which are a lot. Okay, to the, our folder then. So the first thing we have, oh, do you have your stamp with you? In your little box there? We have a septic, um, oh, that's good, good. Then we've had some issues with, some complaints about a septic system on Old Mill Lane while they're replacing it. And here it is. Now, you stamp that, I think there's a couple of other things, actual, we stamp this.
So where do I stamp it?
Stamp this sheet.
Yeah.
And then, and then sign it.
And then stamp the.
Each, there's maybe two of these, a couple of copies of that, maybe stamp two different places.
What is the address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fifty four Old Mill Lane.
I thought I said it a lot, I apologize.
And we have one copy.
Oh, there one is.
So I'm all in, signed it?
Yep. Hang a loan, sorry.
Hang a loan.
I don't know what that's, so then, the, Mr. Clark already reviewed it and that's what we're going to do is that, and that's what.
And there is, he hangs with me.
Yeah. Before we had this happen, which is the newest member of the select board here, we've got the dubious honor of having to stamp in his or her desk and we stamped them. I don't know how many I stamped, but I don't know. The first thing about auto respect, septic system, I know it was not working. It's pretty easy to see, but.
Is that the only one?
That's it. We have, I have a lot of other things here, but that's the only, there's no building permits. Mr. Clark was reviewing them, he was in, he was on vacation last month. So the first thing I have in here, I had a conversation with the town clerk today. We have a request for a refund for motor vehicle registrations. When, when the town clerk, or any town clerk, enters in, they put a VIN number. When you register your car, the first, one of the first things he or she does down there, is enter the VIN number. And that tells you what the manufacturer's suggested retail price is. And that's what the state fees are based on. Or, sorry, the town fees, the states are staying, based on week. So, but the town bases, all the towns base their fees off of what the MSRP is.
Okay.
Well, for some reason, for Nissans, and this is the only manufacturer that has been so far that she's noticed, is coming up over what the actual MSRP is. So, for instance, she put in for a, what is this, a, I don't know what kind of car this is, a, some kind of four-wheel drive Nissan, something like that. The state system says the MSRP is forty-four thousand. Well, the actual MSRP apparently, because the person brought in the paperwork, was rounded up to thirty-seven thousand. Well, the difference of three thousand dollars. And then the other one was twenty-nine thousand and the actual MSRP is twenty-seven thousand. So the state system is not jiving, so Kate's talked to the state and these two individual models of Nissans have been updating, the states go update the system further for others, but Kate is aware and so she's looking for any discrepancies that may be, although I mean, she doesn't, you know, every time, so. So anyways, the point is, this person would like, and I, I would deserve the refund of a hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. That we overcharged her.
Now, that's only for the, kind of, owns for share, right? What happens with the state's share?
So the state's share doesn't change because it's based on the weight of the vehicle?
Oh, only on the weight, okay.
Yeah. So it's mine, that's something what, I think, I gave her about forty-three dollars. It was the last time I registered, one of our cars. I don't know, it doesn't have it in here what she paid when it does. So this person to the state had to pay fifty-nine dollars.
So we, is it based only on new vehicles or is it based on what it is for this year? Because when you have a new vehicle, you have to build a sale, but why wouldn't you use that? Well.
She didn't know they did. They brought in, so the window, the thing, right? They hang it to the window, they did, well, actually, the manufacturer retail price is what's on this thing here. It's not, the state admitted that they had.
Right, but why would she charge them for what the state did if it's higher than what she actually has in her hand?
Well, because the people don't bring in the, the window thing from the car.
The window?
You know, like, you know, like when you go in, it's, it's got the list of all the like the features and things on the car.
I know, but what I'm saying is on new ones. This is only happening on new ones, right?
Not necessarily.
Oh, okay.
This one here only happens to be on new ones, so.
Okay. Because when you, I mean, you have, you have, you're thinking that the dealer prepares for you and that has to be about the other car, right?
That's true. I don't think though that most people, I certainly, I, I would never argue. If she told me, these people pay more. The, the state, rather, the municipal fees for this vehicle in particular, it must be a heck of a vehicle, was seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
That's good.
Heck of a car. And I don't know, I've never had a forty-two dollar car, so, I don't know, maybe some do. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue. I would say, okay, well, that's what the system says, that's what the system says.
Well, yeah, me too, yeah.
And the same with this one is, this one is a smaller vehicle, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. You know, it just, it would seem reasonable.
So how can she, I'm just, how can she stop this from happening? That's, I guess I don't, that's my question.
That's a good question. And I don't think, she said her answer, as I recall, was that she's just working with the state.
Well, I saw that, I saw the email that she sent, then she's going to be working with the state and she's going to, I thought it said she's going to try to review them, but I don't know how she can catch it.
I don't know how she, I don't, I didn't get into that, but.
I'll just let her.
Yep.
Give her a name.
That was her thing, so.
Okay.
All we can do is, is issue the.
Request for reimbursement.
Yeah, authorize it and I think more. The person did it wrong.
You tell me what the don't make. So I'll make a motion to reimburse, um, Sarah Rolet.
Yeah.
A total refund of one seventy fifty for overcharge on two registrations for two thousand and eighteen.
Second that.
Probably. One seventy sixty. Fifty, is that five?
Hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty cents, sorry.
That's two vehicles.
For two vehicles, right.
All those are favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
So does that just need yours?
Yep, oh, that was in my folder, right?
Okay.
No, I've been able to. All right, the only other things I have in here for this evening are, so last week we, we authorized, was it five, I think, let's see, four, current use.
Yep.
And this week we have the abatements under state law. If the abatement is, or rather, the request for current use is, is issued in the tax year, they get an abatement back or a tax over, overpayment.
From the first, first half of the year.
For the year, right? So when Andrea suggests it's better to do it now, there shouldn't be an issue with cash flow.
It can apply to the next half?
It can, but we have to pay them six percent interest. Andrea always suggests it's better not to have to pay them interest on the money and just pay it now.
Okay.
So the first one we have is an abatement for map one dash six, five dash three on Rollins Road in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So we're signing these, so we don't have to vote on them. If we both don't vote, we don't both don't sign them, then they don't get their abatement.
So where's this money come from?
From our, from.
From the revenue from the previous tax bills?
From, yeah. So the short answer is from fund balance, which means when we go to set the tax rate, we have to be mindful of that, so. Now, the next is map, I mean, the money owed to these people.
I'm sorry, is that?
The money is owed to these people. We can either pay them now or we can wait till the second half, when the second half payments are, are due. But even if we tell the sunburn to pay them, we have to pay them six percent interest starting when the date of the grant, the abatement, to when we pay them, so we're better off paying them. Map three dash four dash zero off of River Road in the amount of two hundred and eighty-two dollars. Next one is, are you ready to sign it, sorry? Okay, map one dash six, five dash zero, also off of Rollins Road. Where is it? Let's make sure I'm not doing it every once. Okay, two hundred and eighty dollars, okay. I just wanted to make sure I have the right number, sorry. I was second guessing myself, I'm sorry. So this one, the one dash six, five dash zero off of Rollins Road is three thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So it's going to be about ten dollars. And the last one is map one dash seven, three dash zero, also off of Rollins Road. This amount is seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. A map as well, it's more than that. I said, they qualify for current use, you can't deny it, so that's.
Oh, we have more than this then?
Pardon?
Didn't we have more than?
Those are the ones that we have so far. She's, there are more coming.
Did we approve more?
Yes.
Oh, 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 oh.
These are the ones that are ready for tonight. She's working on it.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, if I can make that clear, I apologize. So there's a few more coming. I asked her about it and said, well, if they qualify, you can't deny it, so the only thing is people need to recognize that the rest of us have to make that difference.
But if it doesn't stay in current use for a certain period of time, then they have to rebate a.
They pay the land use change tax, so they have to pay quite a.
Years is it that has to stay?
I don't know. I know we had a property owner last year who, when Avatar reviewed current use, was found not to be compliant and paid a little money actually, about thirteen thousand dollars? Something like that. It was a very large amount, so, yeah, it's, it's not something we did.
Sure. Yeah. You done?
I am, sorry. I didn't know I needed to sign that.
Oh, yeah, I need this and this. Okay, this is a letter to Terry Bennett telling him the proper procedure of, for his appeal, his abatement that he's looking for, so he's requiring your signature.
Right, to go, to the proper course of action, to go to the Department of Tax and Land Appeal.
Yep.
By September first. I will sign.
Okay, and this is a lawyer bill for the zoning violations by David DeRoch.
This is to deal with one twelve, uh, round.
Round two. This is a lawyer bill for general representation, um, doing an audit, um, DeRoch, near Oak Street, I seventeen, for two hundred and seventeen thirty-six.
Hold on, hold on.
You're going to bottom, isn't that, isn't that? Did I put the markers?
Oh, yes, I, there was, it cost us thirty-five dollars when I told them I went out to do the pre-ambulations.
Yep.
Sorry, but I had to tell them. Okey dokey. So just be mindful, anytime we ever email the lawyers for anything, so if it's outside, I mean, everyone emailed them outside of a meeting, if we haven't approved, like, oh, by the way, Mike just let them know.
Yeah.
Like, okay, I had to let Kevin Baum know that I did that.
Yeah.
That's what he asked. If you just had a question for our legal counsel, you want to make sure it's approved by this network, anytime you reach out and it costs money, it's like, everyone knows.
This is a purchase order, one four eight three Level Computer Services for the town office and the police department.
Yeah.
One ten-hour block of IT time, current balance is zero hours, and the total is seven hundred and sixty dollars coming from the IT hardware, software services line. I am moving.
I'll sign it. So we buy blocks of hours in town, and we're out of, there's another ten-hour block, but there still will be money in that line, in the IT line even after. So, okay, all those are favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
This is a letter from the RISE zoning board adjustment. Notice of a joint public hearing, the committee board, Horizon Power application. So this is everyone who gets them.
Anyone, anyone within fifty miles of a cell phone tower, they're, they're covered here, you have to go.
It's Tuesday, September fourth, at seven PM at the RISE Town Hall. The RISE zoning board adjustment will hold a public hearing on the application of the Selco partnership doing business as Horizon Wireless for various, for variances and special for various, for variances and special exceptions to install a wireless telecommunication facility.
Good luck.
So, it's just kind of like an FYI.
RISE is notorious for denying them. And then all the citizens complaining on a cellphone tower. Good luck.
Voting delegate authorization. New Hampshire Municipal Association is looking for Connor Rollins, which we have a voting delegate authorization, someone appointed.
Yeah, so they have a policy form every year. We are either allowed, and a select board members should go, represent our town, or can go and deliver. But one person has to be appointed to actually vote on the, these are recommendations by other select boards and zoning boards and other member towns to bring forward on behalf of both towns by the municipal association for local sector.
Yep.
To change state law. And I looked at a couple of them. If you have a desire to go to the meeting.
I do not.
We can have you be the appointee if you want. It's on Friday, September fourteenth. And then, so one of them, actually, one of them, I think, is really important. I'm sure they're all important, there are some ones for some reason, but the town of Holderness, the town of Litchfield, the town of Albany, and the town of New Durham, I'm sure amongst others, but these are the ones officially submitted, are asking the New Hampshire Municipal Association to support legislation that would clarify that the town moderator has the authority to postpone the official valid voting session of the town meeting in the event of severe weather. Not the Secretary of State, so. The person actually in the town that's dealing with the town. So I think that's a great idea, but it's going to happen anyways. Associations are fighting this fight for a couple of years now. They're going to do it, but. And then there's one about watering lawns during droughts. We have the authority to tell residents, residential property owners, if they can't do it, we can't help businesses. So, the town of Bedford is suggesting that we'd be allowed to tell, we feel like if we were going to tell wetlands that they can't water them, they're stocked out during the drought.
But they're not even on lawns or water, right?
They're on, they're on doped.
Yeah, so.
That would be a poor example. Let's see, I don't know, who else could we pick up?
There really isn't anybody.
If there were.
Janko wouldn't be either.
Yeah, Janko doesn't want, we can't, we can tell them that Janko ordered it for a lawn.
The one, the new, the refinery there.
Yeah?
There isn't very many.
There isn't, for sure. But anyways, apparently, the town of Bedford thinks it's a problem, so. It may be for them, but. And then Hudson wants to talk about lower the abatement interest rate that municipalities pay from six to four percent, so what we just did. So, so basically, Hudson wants to be able to wait a little longer and pay, if they had to wait, they only have to pay four percent interest and not six percent. Maybe, I don't know. The legislature will never allow it because, I don't know, I'm sure they're going to cut some. So we need to decide by a date certain if one of us is going to go, or if it's in Carolina, and the other employee that wants to go with us, so.
It's Caroline.
Or we just don't go. I mean, there's also that. We have done that before. Is that the only thing that we?
Nope. So, this is whole?
Yeah. If you have a burning desire to go.
We have a letter from Passau looking for five-hundred dollars in the next funding cycle, so I would just recommend holding it for our next part budget.
Yeah. Do they list in their, a lot of them will list what services they provide at the town. I don't know what they're doing.
We're only seeing forty-nine percent because of the number of cases we get and asked to take by the courts in the past two years. I don't think it's, it's not really addressing Rollins or to.
I don't know if they, if they had information specifically. I know they do very poor work. They're really busy, especially with the mortgage.
What is this sample policy for review on the use of tobacco products?
So, this was, this is not for tonight, this is just a whole.
It's just an FYI?
Yeah, so we had on the agenda, I might have, I just already taken off for now, but until we had some slow time, until we get the budget done, we're not going to have any. But remember, there was, we had some folks that wanted to have smoking banned at the transfer station. And other town properties, well, we have to have some sort of policy. So this is the, I said I would look for things. This is the town of Bristol's use of tobacco products and equipment ordinance. I'm not suggesting that this is what we would do, but it's just a place to start, I guess, so. But I would suggest we just take it.
Okay.
I don't, I think we have other issues we need to deal with. Not that second estimate is not an issue.
Still with that one?
Yeah.
Front, yeah. And we're going to, we're going to hold this one?
Yeah, it's the fourteenth of September, I might actually go. So it's in Concord, aren't you, what I saw?
Let me see.
On Manchester, either way. It's a Friday.
Friday, September fourteenth.
It was either.
At New Hampshire Municipal, at Twenty-Five Triangle Park Drive-In Conference. Nine AM.
Is that nine?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I could come soak things around. I have a one-thirty that I can't cancel, but I might be able to. I'm, I'm.
Okay.
One. Town of Rollins. Represented by. I've got it on my calendar right now, so I'll forget.
Okay, so this department revenue, you're going to take care of the two thousand seventeen assessment review? Is that what you said? Is that the one?
Yes. Yep.
So that's still pending?
Yep.
Let me just see it. That's all I have for it.
All right. Give me just a moment, we're going to public comment, but I don't want you to think I'm ignoring you. Just make sure I get this on my calendar.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is, what is the requirement required to be at the polls?
Yes, we should talk about that, too.
Connor didn't know about that.
Well, there's lots of things we don't tell you to make sure that people will run. I'm just kidding. That was really a joke. I'm not trying to cover you, I just want to make sure I don't forget about this, because I will, and I don't want to. So it starts at nine, it's at nine a.m., and after that, it won't. And we'll find out where it's at. Okay, it's in there. Yes, so.
Are they all required to be there?
Yes, well, so state law says for certain elections, we have to be there. And I'm going to be there anyways. And I don't remember, I think I might be misremembering, if it has to be just town elections, or if it's just state and federal elections. But there also is, I think, some, some, some folks that would disagree with the interpretation of whether or not you have to be there at all, or just certain elections. I've always just said we had to be at all of them, and I've gone to all of them. There was a time when, well, many select board members had the elections, so.
I mean, I'm not prepared to do the one coming up. I can come after my hours, after I get out of work. I can't, I can't spend the whole day.
That's fine. I think, well, I mean, I'm, I don't think I'm going to come finance, maybe they will, but I don't think. I'll be here. I mean, so the select board by statute is required to do certain things for the election. We have to make sure there's an American flag in the room. There's one here, and there has to be an American flag outside of the polling place.
Okay.
There is one. We have to select the polling location.
Okay.
That's sort of the bone of contention with some people, what statute has to be actually selected place. Yeah, I haven't thought about it, I think it's going to be here. So if it's a primary election, you can have it all, I guess. What else do we have to do? Make sure the polling location is secure and accessible. And in the veil, for our today, you should have gotten a very large, heavy envelope from the Secretary of State, as all the new election loans in the class. Or I know, I found like a ring thing like this last week.
No.
Okay. I will, I have to be there nine o'clock tomorrow. I'll stop if they ask, and ask them why you're not. See if you're on.
Do they know about me?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, okay, they may not know about any of us, but they were told, the list is sent to them.
Oh, okay.
But, so the town clerk is responsible for sending, and she does, and she has, sent the list in to have all of the newly elected officials. And so they should have updated it. Not everyone gets one, but a select board, and a moderator, a clerk, and probably a supervisor, a check, imaginary supervisor, if you want. Yeah, no.
Okay, no, I didn't get it.
Okay.
Okay, so every, at least every town election?
Every election we're supposed to do, I think.
Okay.
So that's at least.
It's three this year remaining here, right?
Two this year.
Two, two, that's right.
For this year, and then the next year, if I'm not, just the one, town.
Town, okay.
When it's the presidential year. Yeah.
Maybe I'll be retired by then.
So, you know, I'll double check with them in Concord. I'll ask what the requirement is for.
I mean, I can be there, you know, certainly from the time I get out of work to the end of it.
No, I don't know if it's really reasonable to ask important people to take a day off, and to make a law, but I'll check with them, see what the. My understanding was it was for all the elections. But now that I'm saying, I think I've read it again, and it's certain. And they were actually trying to change it on the past year to say that the select board member.
Definitely, okay.
But it didn't pass.
And just to make another comment.
Yep.
Is that, I think that we should consider changing our location for our elections as well.
Okay.
To the region.
For all of them?
I think so.
Every single one?
There's parking, there's room, you know, especially in the winter, it's all one level. And, you know, I think if you, if you grant me the right to do it, I will be in contact and ask them what they think that they will be.
We've asked them before, and they were willing to wait.
And so if we get that in writing, then I can.
So, this has been the, Taylor, we discussed it before. I mean, we shouldn't discuss it again, and we probably will. For the larger, for the larger elections, the clerk, I mean, the clerk does all the logistical, moving of things and setting up the polls and all that. For the smaller elections, she doesn't think the logistics of moving everything is worth. For, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but that's what I've been told. For the larger elections, like the presidential election, or even state general elections, it makes a lot of sense. The turnout is so small, typically for the state primary elections.
Okay.
And arguably, back and forth over the years, maybe the town elections. I just think they should be down, town elections should be down to determine the weather.
Well, just because a parking here is a problem. And so, I mean, I think we should make it as easy as possible for the people who are coming out to vote. And they may come out more if you have places that they can park, and they can get into it, and, you know, it's all hand-to-hand, accessible, no elevators, you know, I mean.
Confident, really. So we.
We could go a little bit.
We, we've had that conversation. I've got to double check. And I don't know if we did get the location for everyone. We only did for several. That's why we better go back and look.
I won't do it now, but we can kind of put it back on the table for a conversation.
So we can add to the agenda for next week, because it's coming up.
While we can't, while we can't do the.
Well, we can now, because it's too late, because the warrant for the election has already been posted, and that's definitely for the number of.
Yeah, no, no, we don't have to do this one. But, you know, I think definitely, and being that it's going to be an SB two as well, you're going to get more and more people, and you just want to have it be as safe.
Yeah, I agree.
And as available as possible for everyone.
No argument from the other side of the table.
We should really look into that.
Is that it?
Nope.
All right, that's fine. Can we do a book?
Yeah, just a simple question. When's the space needs? Is it the twenty-third or the thirtieth?
What are you talking about?
Your space, your space needs.
The police one?
Yeah.
It's, it's Thursday.
Yeah, it's posted the thirtieth.
Oh, you must have, you must have missed posted it. What's the third, does that?
It's a week from this.
It's a week after.
I will have her correct that. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. I know she posted it, she told me she did, but I will talk to her. Thank you.
There you go. All right, well, by consensus, we will adjourn the meeting at eight oh six. Trying to take a picture of the.